By the time you get here, it's a moot point. He wants me to start earlier than I said because you.
I see him every morning.
By the time you get back, it's gonna be seven.
All the meeting of the quarter, please stand for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Public for which it stands.
Thank you. I'd like to begin with a moment of silence. For Barbara Sabo Longo, a graduate of North Syracuse Central School District, and Jenna Tartaro, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central. Thank you. Okay, for presentations today, we have, it's BPT season, so we have two BPT presentations. And it shows me Roxborough Road Elementary is going first. Is that true?
Right.
So they've clapped already, so they've set the bar for this.
Alright, good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us a few minutes to share with you the great things that go on at Roxborough Elementary School. Joining me tonight up front are Sandy Thorne and Tracy Buffa, two of our excellent reading teachers. I'd also like to say thank you to the many staff members who were in attendance here tonight. So thank you all for coming and supporting our school.
Here is our mission statement. Roxborough Road Elementary School is dedicated to fostering a respectful and safe learning community. Our goal is to guide and encourage students to achieve their individual potential and to be productive citizens. Please take a minute to read our vision statement.
Please take a minute to read about who we are.
We chose to highlight the following goals based on our summer work developing the school comprehensive education plan.
Our goal is to utilize learning targets to challenge students, meet individual needs, and drive instruction.
A learning target is, like, in the beginning of class. It will be like, at the end of the class, you should be able to identify certain levels of expanded form and written form. And it helps me because I understand what I have to do. And if we have choices, like what games we can play, what game will help me with that, that way I can finish at the end and have my exit ticket done, and I get 100%.
Learning targets help me, like, at the end of the class, we have, like, exit tickets to do. And then I look at there, I look at it, and it has, like, a little example sometimes. And I look at the example, and it helps me finish my exit ticket.
Our goal is to improve student performance in math.
We are working hard to increase our math understanding at Roxborough Road Elementary.
During PLC time, teachers are using the data from common formative assessments to set individual goals for students in math.
This summer, we had a special program called Math Camp. The selected third and fourth grade students went to Math Camp for three days a week for six weeks. They had a small focus skill groups that worked on building understanding and connecting concepts and skills. Each student was also served breakfast and lunch.
We are also very lucky to have the After School Math Adventure Club this year. All of the third and fourth grade students were invited, and we had 90 students participate for this first session. Students stay after school from 4 o'clock to 5 o'clock three days a week. They have a snack and work on math concepts, applications, and problem-solving strategies.
Well, that makes sense, because I'm gonna tell you that the first standard that's on here, you did awesome with it. You got three out of the four questions on that standard right. So number two was on that standard, actually, no wait, I'm sorry. Number one was on that standard, number six was on that standard, and number 10 was on that standard. So that tells me that you really understand that standard. So I'm gonna have you color that standard in, because you did really well with it. Go ahead, color that first box. So I'm thinking that that's where we might wanna set a goal, because you did miss a couple of the rounding questions. So I'm thinking, let's, let's use that for something to practice. What do you think? Yeah, okay. So let's turn to your goal pages. And I'm gonna have you write right in there. What do you think your goal should be for rounding? How could we phrase it? My goal is to... Yeah, at rounding six-digit numbers. So to the hundred thousands. Perfect. Go ahead and write that right in there.
Our goal is to facilitate academic learning goals with all students.
Here are the reasons why setting goals helps us grow as learners.
Goal settings gives us, gives us a clear direction and focus. Our goals are achievable, measurable, and believable.
Being involved in the goal-setting process increases our commitment toward achieving the goal and motivates us to challenge ourselves.
Setting goals allows us to take our ownership of our learning, and it also helps us develop skills that prepares us for future careers.
We celebrate our accomplishments when we reach our goal in a variety of ways.
And seeing our results gives us a confidence and assurance that we can achieve even higher goals.
The red and white words are the yellow ones that I know.
I'm on Level E, and I'm trying to get to level F. And Stretchy Snake is helping me.
Our goal is to increase student attendance.
We have been working very hard to increase our attendance at Roxborough Road Elementary.
In September, we signed an attendance pledge with our families. We made a promise to be at school every day and on time.
We are very lucky, because when we are out sick, Mrs. B makes a phone call home to check on us.
We are so excited to receive attendance awards for its awesome attendance. The third and fourth graders celebrate each week with a special dance party.
Our goal is to increase parent communication and community involvement.
This August was our first-ever Meet Your Teacher event at Roxborough Road Elementary School. We were so excited to come see, to come to school to see our teachers and bring out, bring in our school supplies. We also had a chance to participate in a fun STEM project with the YMCA. Can you believe 216 students and their families attended this wonderful event?
Book Fan Go is one of our favorite things at Roxborough Road Elementary School. Thank you, Mrs. Straub. We love being able to choose a new book each time you visit.
Throughout the year, we have several evening programs that are centered around our families.
During kindergarten transition night, our incoming kindergarten students met our teachers and participated in readiness activities.
At our annual science fair, we created science projects at home and presented them to our peers.
During the wellness and book fair night, local groups such as Liberty Resources, Slana Free Library, YMCA, Syracuse University Nutrition Students, the Mattydale Fire Department, and the Anadog County Sheriff's Department came to share information with our families.
Our events encompass family participation and lend a hand towards building a home and school connection.
Our goal is to create a positive learning environment.
At our school, we have the Positivity Project and PBIS, which stands for Positive Behavior Intervention and Support.
Positivity Project and PBIS helps us with our character social, emotional, learning, and assists us in becoming people who are strong, helpful, kind, and caring.
PBIS also helps us to be safe, set goals for improvement, and work on our challenges along the way.
Each month, we meet together as a community to continue building our skills at afternoon program.
Positivity Project and PBIS work together to help us be amazing people in a supporting learning environment.
Thank you for allowing us a few minutes to share some of the great things that are happening at Roxborough Elementary School. Do you have any questions left to ask?
I do. So who were the stars that we heard their voices in the background?
Two third, go ahead.
The kids.
Yeah, we...
Did a great job.
Yeah, we picked, like, a variety of grades. We did second grade, third grade, and fourth grade students. And some of them were our AIS kids, too, were reading teachers, so.
Served some extra credit for that.
I know. We should put a slide in. We, we were gonna actually get a slide and put them all in there, and... Yeah, we were just worried about the number of slides, but yeah.
So also, the attendance program. I guess I'm, I wasn't aware there was attendance issues for elementary. I mean, that's just, like, what are you seeing? I mean, you, parents have to send in excuses.
Right. The New York State really is now requiring that all students avoid chronic attendance problems. Basically, if they miss 10% or more of the school days that they're registered for, then, then that becomes a problem according to the New York State guidelines. So we're really working with our families to, you know, obviously, if a student is sick, then, then they're legitimately sick, they need to stay home. But we're trying to curtail some of the families that may take an extended weekend or just, for whatever the reason might be. So, right, so it's, it's a lot of work with, with our families to try to just support the, the importance of school and coming to school continuously or regularly. So it's our, our family work that we're really working towards this year.
Talk about it at parent night and...
Yes, any and every chance we get. Try to drive that point home.
I have a few comments. They can hear me. I noticed 64% of your school's free and reduced lunch. Now, the new program that you have through Wendy Swift, that every child at your school gets a free lunch and breakfast.
Yes, sir.
And how is that going, Matt?
It's going, coming along pretty good. We've, you know, certainly, the initial first few days of September were a little bit more challenging, because we gotta feel for what the numbers would look like and how to handle the volume. But we've streamlined our process quite a bit now, and we're, we're moving along pretty well.
Very successful.
I would say so.
The other one, and, and I used to go down there and read to the students. It's, it's marvelous school, staff, you're, you're amazing. Is the reading. That one, I see one-third of your students, that's quite a few, are in AIS. And I take it that's reading, or is that reading and math?
Reading and math.
How many of you are there? There's two of you here. Is it just the two of you, or are there...
Like, it's somewhere in the back.
Right there. And our teaching assistant, Mrs. Cobb, right there.
So you have three teachers.
Three teachers and an assistant assigned. Correct.
Is that mainly a pull-out program, or is there some pushing into the classrooms?
We push in for math and pull out for the, for the reading.
I truly like your goal. I think that is amazing, to have students sit down and actually work out their goals one-on-one with the teacher based on that. How's that done in kindergarten, first grade? It's gotta be a little different. Is it...
That was a first grade.
Was a first grade.
The first grader that did the binder, yes.
Okay.
Out of Mrs. Saino.
So first grade, right, so it's first grade through fourth grade's able to do that? That is probably an awesome, awesome program, to have kids sit down, see where they're, where they're strong, where they're weak and go from.
Made great growth in a very short period of time with this idea. First grade started taking it around a little bit over a year ago, and we've come really a long ways in a really short period of time. So thankfully, I've got a, a great group of people that I get to work with every day. Take an idea and run with it and make it happen. So powerful.
This is a great program. Thank you.
Active participants, that's our hope.
Right, just as long as they understand what they're doing.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Yeah, that, thanks for the creative way to display this. I thought that was kinda neat. Please keep us posted. Let us know what we can do or provide for you through the channels you have for that. And just a shout-out to Heather, I see her hiding back there. There was a great little video clip. Sorry, the phone call interrupted you there. How, how are the, how are the seat sacks working out? I saw we approved, alright, that's good to see, alright. Oh, cool, okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes, thank you so much.
We have Cicerone Elementary BPT.
Good evening, Board of Education, presentation. We're here to present our Cicerone Elementary School BPT plan for the year. With me, Melissa Dickens. And Cory Patterson. Updated to the 500 names, too. New York State. We have three different goals that we're working on this... Um, last, almost the same.
Happy Birthday, Happy Birthday.
Okay, ready? I'm gonna tell you the... Good job. Awesome. Now say "ab". Excellent. Say "ab". Now say "ed". Great. Say "if". Now say "if". Excellent. Should we do... Are you ready? Here we go. Good job. Oh, sorry.
Happy Birthday.
It didn't seem as long when I... SEL initiatives that were... This was a day contest.
Bow horses, bow horses, what's the time of day? One o'clock, two o'clock, time to go away. Here we sit, round and round, we must go. Oh, my golly, let's eat, gee. Round and round, we must go. Oh, my golly, let's eat, gee.
So again, this is. Good morning, show to.
I'm Cory Patterson. You just saw me in that video. I'm here to talk about our special area team. I think we have a very positive and involved special area. Provide a lot of extra activities in our students within the music, or the classroom and outside. I'm gonna highlight one thing from each area up there. The physical education. All-day hike on a Saturday to Bald Mountain. On the art class, it's not up there, but they do a community-based art projects for veterans hospital. Veterans and then for meals. In the music room, you, you saw the, just a snapshot of my classroom. And this year, the third grade students, they're doing North Syracuse. Project where each third grade class is going to do a soundtrack on those orphan instruments that you saw in the video to. Five different little performances. I mean, the whole school benefits from those instruments. In the library, this year they have new before and after-school clubs. And Mr. DeSantis librarian will tell you about that in our next video.
About the English language learners. Last year, we did our first multicultural fair.
Asked with the cultural fair. So important to have heritage and embrace that. Share it with their classmates. And I guess I'm surprised there's, there's so many different countries that are their first generation.
Yeah, so at the multicultural fair, there were also.
Okay.
But we have. 18 countries represented.
The video clips too of the class.
Many, we have one ELL. That book thing, I learned about that last year on BOSIS. Very, very proud of the number. Former school. I just wanna say, and I wanna say it for both schools. I don't know if people realize the time that teachers and administrators, developing their goals, their plans, not done just during the school day, done at home. Many, many hours are spent. I've been gone 13 years now, doesn't seem possible. Amount of work that you have to do, and I know you'll love it, I know you'll love the kinds of programs you have, but it does take.
Have one final comment about the ELLs. We've increased the number of ELL students in the district probably at least 25 a year, every year for the last five or six years. When we started the program at Cicerone, we started with one teacher, then the next year we had to add another, and now we're up to 2.6. And I was at the multicultural fair, and the one thing, the pride that the students, as you can see on their faces, dressing in their home cultural attire, they were just on cloud nine to be able to present. And the one thing that we talked to the teachers about was they really wanted to get their parents involved. And so, at least last year, the teachers were talking about, should they do that at the day and have something at night so the parents can come and see and kinda meet and just be able to talk more about their culture? So, again, that was very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have, nobody signed up for comments from the audience, so we'll go right into Board of Education Committee reports. I know, Mary, you didn't have. Welcome to say whatever you, I know you don't have a meeting till.
Correct. The November meeting, we canceled it because we only had two policies that were up for review, so we just goes to December and combined them with the December agenda. Get the month off. And our, our next meeting is on Monday.
Robert, did you have, did you wanna update us on that wonderful legislation, Legislative Committee that you held last week?
So, recently, the Legislative Committee met last Wednesday. We were privileged to have our Assemblyman, Sterpy, there. I thought it was an excellent meeting. All year, I know Don. Questions and brought up some concerns that I'll talk about later. I thought it was a great meeting, and we're gonna give our committee December off, and we'll, our next meeting will be January.
Can I just comment on, you talk about a difficult year, what's, wanna put the number, I heard Legislature, Assemblyman Sterpy mentioned the $2 billion hole in Medicaid from the feds. It concerned me, but would concern me more as he mentioned so many, we talked about the pieces of the pie again, pieces, and he mentioned higher ed was in, had a greater need than K-12. You know, I don't begrudge higher ed, they need what they need, but not like we were high up on the list, which is a concern. Thought I'd throw that great news in there, but we have challenges every year, so I'm sure we'll be up for this. Wanna mention the vote? Come on, one more time.
Oh, no, I'm gonna do that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He goes first this time.
Mr. Bowles?
Hey, so there's a lot that's been going on in the district that has been absolutely outstanding. We're gonna start with swimming and diving. We have five athletes going to States at Ithaca, starting this Thursday through the 23rd. Maddie Thorne, I think it's Bryn Myers, Elena Harbaugh, Brittany Wood, and Jeanne Vannett. So, again, congratulations, and I missed one.
And Caitlin Carroll.
Caitlin Carroll, sorry about that. And then, we also, Maddie was athlete of the week, so that was another, another honor for swimming and diving. Football is going to the state semifinals this Saturday, 6:00 PM. We are hosting at our, our facilities against McQuaid Jesuit, and that will be at 6:00 PM, so it will be an exciting game. We had a nail-biter last week, and we beat Corning Painted Post on a last-second field goal, 24 to 21. So, congratulations to our, our football team. Girls' cross-country, seven students will be competing in the Federation Meet on Saturday on the 23rd at Bowman Park in Wapinners Falls. Kate Putman had her personal best at States, and she was sixth in Section 3. Boys volleyball, many people were there, and they had a hard fight on Saturday at Regionals, but came up just short in the five-set match in a battle against Shenandoah. Congratulations to students and teachers who competed at the most. These are students from both middle schools, and we had Colleen O'Connor and Steve Bacon were the two teachers that worked with the students, and we had so many teams that were there. And Roxborough Middle School won Best Bridge Design, and Gillette's team won Best Team Name. And the last thing I have is that letters of intent or signings, we had Maddie Thorne going to St. Bonaventure, Katie Theas Bentley for field hockey, Jacqueline Coopley Bentley for softball, Brooke Nicholas Lemoine for softball, and Shannon Cisco Mansfield for softball. So, it's been a wonderful week for our district and our students.
Thank you. Board of Ed comments.
One more time, you're gonna hear me and the audience laugh, but I think I got most of them. Tomorrow is a very important vote for any school district resident in Adaw County except the city of Syracuse, and also in Cortlandt County. BOSIS would like to purchase the Crown Road campus. Any of our special need students go to, and our Board President and Vice President, Superintendent. Last week or the week. But we've been paying rent for many, many years. This will save North Syracuse in there. Not only is it good for kids, it's good for our school. So, voting is tomorrow from 10 to 8 at four different places, and approximately 9:30 tomorrow, the final vote. The other thing is, I'm gonna give this to Connie. Tim Ryan is Superintendent of Schools at Fabius Pompey, and he puts, just like Dan Bowles does in his newsletter, some really interesting article. And this article is about, I'll read the first sentence. "Schools districts are trying to strike the right balance between rigorous academics designed to be a foundation of a successful college experience and workforce development." So, it's a great article, I'm gonna give it to Connie to send it to the board, but it shows how BOSIS and schools work very well. My other thing is a concern I have. Listening to the news tonight, West Genesee is planning to do something positive, and it came up in our legislative meeting. One of our students brought up about vaping. I would like some kind of presentation done, if possible. I know your schedule is up, and BOSIS does have a group of people that do it, they did it. I wasn't able to do it because we were here two weeks ago. There's somebody at BOSIS that can do a presentation on vaping. I really think we need to look at it. Dangerous. Many of our students are doing it. Like to see something presented to the school board on vaping.
Something was done at the. Mr. Leclerc has a whole presentation, I've seen it.
I have not seen it. Was it done for the school board?
Actually, it's a video. It's a YouTube video. Yeah, Bill recorded it.
Apologize.
No, I can, I can forward it to you. It's, it's really. I'll just add that on Friday, I was able to go see, can't take it with you, with Dan at the high school. As always, they always put on a great show, so congratulations to all the students and staff that worked on that.
One quick follow-up, Mr. Crabtree. ESM is putting on Wednesday night, and so, do you have the flyer on that? Because I can send it to you.
No, but I have another.
I have something that I've been working on through the. Wide-known figure in. And actually involving Rock. In that project to bring, basically to grow the kids. They learn to care for the plants. At, it's either home. At, it's either home. Is to the canteen. Air in need of food there. Person actually puts these.
Any other comments? I just wanna point out, I know a meeting or two ago, I referenced that putting something together in my reflections from the NISBA conference and Connie did email those out, so. Point that out to you. And there was a live link. In that, in case you wanted to go look at the position statements or positions that NISBA's taking. One is vaping. They do have a position. Ards to vendors that sell to underage or adults to provide. And we discussed that at the legislative.
Okay, thank you. If I can go on to routine action items, if I could get a motion to bring the minutes for us. Mary, any questions on those minutes? None, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. If I get a motion, put B, C, and. Carrie, B is the consideration of classification of the disabled students by the District Committee on Special Ed. C is the placement of preschool disabled by the preschool committee and. By the Home Instruction Review. For us, any questions? None, all in favor? Opposed? Carrie, discussion action items. We have A, the contract agreement between North Syracuse Central School District and the North Syracuse. Bob, any discussion? None, all in favor? Enamously. B, can I get a motion, put B, the appointment of the custodian of. Second by Mary, any discussion? Staining. Get a motion, put C before us. C is recommendation to create a .2 FTE. Session. And motion for D, resolution authorizing. Five-year service contract on Dog and Cortland Madison BOSI. Lit fiber for high-speed communication service. Karen, any discussion? Favor? Opposed? Carried? And E, a motion to put the surplus of non-marketable equipment. Carrie, second from Terry. Any discussion? There was an ice cream freezer in there. I always like looking at what's not. Favor? I saw, yeah. Yes. Like to recognize a retirement we have for us. Recognizing that is Michelle LaRue, a bus driver, retired with 11 years of. Have A, the instructional personnel report. Can I get a motion? Karen, any discussion? Favor? And B, support staff personnel report. Can I get a motion to place that? Mark, second by George. Questions? Favor? Opposed? Time then, if I get a second, I'm gonna make a motion to go into. Session, the motion. Not gonna tell you what it is until this thing. Well, I'm gonna guess based on my memory today, this is not moving now, so. We are going to discuss items with the North Syracuse Teachers Association. Employment history of one individual. Get a second? Second from George, any discussion on that? Favor? Opposed, that's Carrie, just a motion for adjournment, please. Motion from Mark, seconded by Terry. We are adjourned, thank you.